Board of Commissioners regular meeting, June 7th, 2022. Before we get started with our meeting opening, our public comments, I'd like to call on Mike Davis to come forward to present an award to our Walton County 4-H shotgun team. They won the state championship in shooting sports. And come forward.
There you go. Y'all follow the chairman's orders there, you know. First of all, we want to thank the commissioners for inviting us here this evening, and we're going to make this as brief because I know y'all have a lot to do. And first of all, thanks, thank you to all you commissioners for allowing us this time to highlight one of our many 4-H safe programs, shooting sports programs. SAFE stands for Shooting Awareness Fund and Education. And tonight, we're going to recognize our 2022 shotgun teams. Shotgun discipline includes the areas of modified trap, sporting clay, skeet, and regular trap. Our team is under the great leadership of two outstanding volunteer coaches. It's been my pleasure to get to know them this year, Mr. Jesse Weaver and his lovely wife, Ms. Ashley Weaver, and we owe them a big grant of gratitude for their work. Our teams have had a great 4-H season this year. Our junior team finished third in the state in the modified trap shoot. Our team members are there are Noah Camp, Tate Jones, Philip King, Dakota Stevens, and Jack Stokowski on that team. A great job by those guys. And our senior team finished first in the state modified trap match in a very high wind condition on that day. I must say, it was an interesting day to be shooting out there on the field. Those team members on that team were Avery Head, Matthew Lures, Michael McIntosh, Jackson Mooney, and Sawyer Standard. Avery was also second highest individual at that competition, and for these young men, they will be going on to, in July, to Atlanta to State Congress to receive additional awards for their performances. At the state sporting clay trap and skeet match a few weeks back, it done in Savannah, Dakota Stevens was second highest individual in the sporting clays representing our junior team. And our senior team that was down there, the match made up of Michael McIntosh, Aiden Price, Avery Head, and Slade Miller. They finished third in the state, and Michael McIntosh was the second highest senior overall individual at this state match. For those who are not familiar with it, that's a two-day competition. Three hundred rounds of shells are shot, and needless to say, probably a few sore shoulders after that event. But anyway, a great job and a great performance by our shotgun team this year. And so, as I can tell you, that we are very proud of our shotgun team members, and I am personally excited for those senior members that will be representing us in July at the State 4-H Congress in Atlanta for a special recognition of master status. I'm a master 4-Her myself, and I know what that means, so I'm proud for them. Thank you, guys. And that's our award-winning shotgun team.
If y'all want to bunch up here and take some pictures in front of the board, be great, holding your plaque or whatever. We need to kind of concentrate.
On the, on the state plaque, we, let me just tell you about that. It's coming to us. The one that we were presented, we lost.
You lost it.
You might better do it, Jesse. We lost a very special person.
I grew up in the sport. Actually, actually got me started in 4-H shooting sports. My coach growing up was Brad Allgood. Great man, great coach. A lot of y'all probably know Brad Allgood. We lost him actually on our district qualifier for state. When, the day that we won state, it was not going to be, we weren't going to win it. But little prayers, Brad looked over us, we won state. I took and handed that plaque when we left Rock Eagle and went and handed it to his wife, Lisa, that day. So we don't have that plaque yet, but the state is getting us another plaque to put in the office. But it was a big deal for me to give it to Ms. Allgood in recognition of Brad for everything he's done for us and his team. He's one of the founders of this team along with Mr. Thompson because way back in the day when I was little beady. But thank y'all.
I was one of the first shotgun coaches.
Make sure we look up, yes.
Thank you. Thank y'all again.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Terrence is doing good, huh?
As well.
The Iceman, the Iceman.
They all got the I's on him now.
If anyone would like to remain standing once they leave out, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and have an invocation. And we'll let everyone exit first, be courteous. It's not, it's not very proper to be walking out during the pledge of allegiance. And I thought they were all here for planting and zoning. Okay, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell me if you know you're my man.
Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for our, all the wonderful people that helped the 4-H team, and thank you for them, and please watch over those young kids and help them to prosper and do better in life, do great. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions for the county, and thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay that I add to, add some special prayers for firefighter Bramblett for losing his wife and also for David Jarrett for losing his mom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order and roll call. Let it be known that all commissioners are present, and we have adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? And I have one addition. We need to add to the agenda the request from the library board of trustees for us to consider two actions so they can seek funding from the state on Loganville, new library that they're wanting to build. And the board of commissioners will meet at a different time, consider what we will contribute toward that effort. But they need to be working on the state for their grant, and I'd like to add that to the agenda for discussion, and I guess it'll be added where around. During discussion. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Now, the fun part of the program, planning commission recommendations.
Okay, so our first case is approval with conditions Z2202-0018, rezone 8.68 acres from A1 to B2 with conditional use for outside storage. The applicant is Jason Atha. The owners, Don Moon and David Samples. Property is located at Georgia Highway 11 and Mailman Smith Road. This is in District 4. It was tabled last month. So they would like to do mini warehouses with outside storage for boats and campers. We had one person that spoke in opposition. They were concerned about Mailman Smith Road being a small country road and felt that the entrance should be off of Highway 11. The planning commission recommended approval with conditions, realignment of Mailman Smith Road, which is what they showed on their site plan, to allow ingress and egress from Highway 11 only, to be coordinated with Georgia DOT, no commercial vehicle storage allowed, an eight-foot-high screened solid fence around the perimeter, which is in the ordinance, and a vegetative screen on property adjacent to the A1 parcels.
Okay. All right, I will open a public hearing on this zoning with conditions and ask if the applicant is here and would he come up and tell us what you're wanting to do. Is the representative from the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the applicant earlier today. His father's sick and is in the hospital, but we did speak about it earlier today.
We did what?
I said, we did. I spoke with Jason Atha earlier today. There, his dad Gerald's in the hospital. We could add him to our prayers as well.
He did call me, and I tried to return his call, but he didn't, we didn't ever get back in touch.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here in favor of this application that would like to speak? Yes.
My name is Chester Clegg. I live at 2523 Whitney Road. I am the homeowner behind this development, the only homeowner that has property adjacent to the property being proposed to be rezoned. I am, I am good with the mini warehouses and outside storage with, with RVs and boats. I do request, though, that it's a couple of conditions that, Mr. Chairman, I would request that you add to the conditions that are already listed to protect my property. If you would consider that, please. Let me just read those out for you. The first is cutoff lighting for any lighting they have outside of the building. Outdoor lighting fixtures shall be cutoff luminaire type whose light source is completely concealed. Light source shall not be visible from any surrounding property. I request that we get a, provide a 100-foot undisturbed buffer along the rear property line of parcel C140090, which is the property being rezoned. And I don't believe the 100-foot buffer will adversely affect his development. Mr. Moon, who owns the property and owned the property beside it that the county rezoned to B3 probably 10 years ago, was generous enough to work with me, and, and he granted a 100-foot buffer, undisturbed buffer for that, for those parcels. I'm just requesting the same thing for this B2 parcel. I'm requesting that sites shall be designed and constructed so that no stormwater runoff from the development on, on this parcel, this parcel 140090, discharged onto the property located 2523 Whitney Road. The, currently, the drainage runs off the side of the parcel, which would be to the north, and I thought at one meeting before I'd seen a, a plan where the detention bomb was in the back and it discharged onto my property. I'm just requesting that the site plan, the site plan be required to keep the flow of the stormwater in the same direction that it's going now. If it flows onto my, if the eight acres are, you know, discharged onto my property, it'll end up going under my hen house and my, my barn across by my house, down my driveway, into my well, into my, my pond, so I request that you consider that condition. Of course, no parking, tractor trailers, sorry, in the, the, the conditions that are proposed. And one last thing, development, development in use shall be consistent with the stated purpose of rezoning from A1 to B2, self-storage facility with boat and RV outside storage. Any future development or change in use shall require public notice and approval by the board of commissioners.
Which parcel's yours?
It's the one with the, looks like a little crop circle up there with the house in the middle, right there. Oh, yeah, that's my, that's.
That's it, right there.
That's my house right there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clegg. You kin to Bill Clegg?
I'm his son.
Very good. Bill was one of my favorite teachers in high school. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, either for or against this?
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Callaway. I'm a resident of Mailman Smith Road.
Powe, P-O-W-E-R.
Sir.
Your name?
Jacob.
Jacob.
Yes, sir, Callaway.
Callaway.
Yes, sir. Resident of Mailman Smith Road, I represent Mailman Smith Estates, which is 10 developments that have been recently added in the area, along with several other residents that live in the area. We support the approval of it at this point in time. We thank the commissioner and the chairman and the board for the stipulations that have been placed on it. We request that it be approved with the current stipulations of the entrance being on Highway 11, and that, we do request that the lighting stipulation be added to it that Mr. Clegg approached from my neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on this and ask the board what you want to do, gentlemen.
Shawna.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I'm correct on this, the site lighting, that's already included in our ordinance, correct?
It's, well, not exactly like he read it, so we, it does have to be downward.
Okay.
And, you know, facing away from neighboring, but if you want to go ahead and add that, that'll be, that's fine.
Okay. I don't know that I can read all that. I'll try to. That was a lot to remember.
We've got his letter as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then I also, I spoke with Mr. Atha. He didn't have a problem at all with the 100-foot buffer because it's actually a 100-foot buffer on all of them, and from what he was saying, it's actually going to be undisturbed because of the railroad anyway. Everything through there is really going to be undisturbed and not really touched. So that wasn't really much of an issue for the 100-foot buffer to be added. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, as approved for the stated purpose at the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the additional condition of the 100-foot buffer that both sites have agreed to on Mr. Clegg's property, and with the site lighting to be consistent with what Mr. Clegg had presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second for Commissioner Shalnot. Any further discussion? The stormwater, let me ask that right quick. You can't change the direction of stormwater.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's actually a ditch on the backside of it, Chairman, that runs down along the other B3 properties, which, from speaking to Gerald yesterday, Gerald Atha, that he said that they would direct the stormwater into that current ditch and not create anything additional to go down through there.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, second one.
Approval of Z2203-0027, rezone five acres from A to A1. The applicant and owner at the time of, when they applied was Alicia Bowen. She has since sold it and has moved. The property is located at 5748 Kent Rock Road. This is in District 3. I'm not sure if she's here. She didn't come to the planning commission. She was out of town, and because she had already moved, I told her that I would represent it. She had the property rezoned to A for a boarding, breeding for dogs, and she promised the HOA when she applied for the rezon that if she ever moved, that she would rezon it back. And so that's what she's doing. There was no opposition, and the planning commission recommended approval.
Okay, I still got open public hearing on this. We'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here to make comments on this particular action? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board what they would like to do.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Shalnot?
Second.
Second. I think it was Commissioner Warren. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we proceed on, passes unanimous.
All right, the next case is approval with conditions Z2203-0028, rezone 5.28 acres from A1 and R1 to A to grow and sell plants with customer contact. The applicant is Cosman Backton, and there are also other property owners. Property is located at 1630 New Hope Church Road. This is in District 3. There was no opposition, and the planning commission recommended approval with condition that the hours of retail be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that no commercial farm animal production be allowed on the premises. The planning commission recommended approval.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, do we have a definition of commercial farm animals?
Okay, well, we, we, I had to kind of explain that at the, at the planning commission meeting because they just don't want it to be like where they're, they have goats or pigs that they're selling, like as a commercial use. They wanted to say no farm animals, but the gentleman was like, well, I may want a couple of goats. And so that's why we put no commercial farm animals.
Well, we need to draw up a definition of commercial farm animals.
Commercial use.
Because I see a fight coming down the road.
That could be, I mean, maybe we could say, you know, personal, personal farm animals as allowed by the code, which is four per fence taker, and they can have that by code.
Well, all right.
They can have two horses per fence taker or four goats.
Let's say that in, in this, when we get to it. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this. Are the applicants here and would like to come tell us what they're wanting to do? The applicants are not here. Well, one of them is. He's bashful. You guys tell us what you want to do for the record.
So pretty much it's going to be greenhouses. We're growing tomatoes, cucumbers, and also sell, as we grow, we sell whatever we make. That's it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Any questions from the board before he leaves? I'm sorry. All right, is anyone here opposed to this? I'd like to see more of this, really. No, we do have opposition.
My name is Robert Warnock. I'm the homeowner in St. Martin subdivision, which is adjacent to the property. My parcel is not adjacent to the property, but we have one entrance and one exit ex, to the neighborhood. It's on the top of a hill. It's already busy. Walton Crown County is growing like crazy. There's development going up everywhere with homes and neighborhoods, and New Hope Church Road is getting busier and busier and busier. The previous person that owned this particular property was trying to develop a business there, and it adjacent us right up two hours. We had some bad run-ins with that, that person, and I have some concerns with another business being opening there now, one with the traffic, two because of the close proximity to our neighborhood, we can't have goats on our property. With the livestock, we had issues with water runoff from that property from before, contaminating our yards that, that we had to take care of. And the ultimate thing is the resale value of our homes. If you have a property outside that's not desirable, it's going to be hard for us to sell our homes because of the business located right next, I mean, it's right next door. It's actually kind of a piece of that property. It's that close. Loud noises, I don't know about what lights that are going to put up for the greenhouses. There were greenhouses there before, when I first moved in, but they tore those down and did away with them. So I understand, but that was before the neighborhood was developed. Now we have a neighborhood in there, and I would like the board to consider the neighbors of St. Martin and what we have to deal with there, as well as the safety of that street. I don't think Walton County is going to have any plans of widening that street or putting a light there, our neighborhood. So I just don't think commercial businesses should be that close to our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, is anyone else here in opposition like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public. Does the applicant want to rebut anything that the opposition said before I close the public meeting? Does not? Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board what their preferences.
Shawna.
Yes, sir.
If they build greenhouses, how far from the property line do they have to be?
They just have to be the setback, so it would be 40 foot on the rear.
Is that by code?
Mm-hmm, by, for code, yes.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions set by planning and zoning, with the exception that we need, you tell me how to say it now, for personal farm animals.
Yes, as allowed in the code.
As allowed in the code.
Yes. That's perfect.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Got one? No, Commissioner Warren. All right, still passes. All right, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, this is approval of Z2204-0001, rezone 12.79 acres from B2 to B3 for car storage and shipping. The applicant is Kaffee Kamu, and the owner is Norma Billingsley and James and Elaine Bailey. Property is located on Georgia 20. This is in District 2. So as the applicant presented this at the planning commission, they want to rezon the property to store vehicles that he purchases, and then he will ship them overseas. He plans to build a 6,000-square-foot building with approximately five employees. They intend to begin with the storage of about 140 cars that will be parked on gravel, and that could increase to 300 cars. The front portion of the property may be set aside as commercial use. There was no opposition, and the planning commission recommended approval with no conditions.
Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing on item 44 and ask if the applicants here would please come forward and tell us what they're planning to do. You're representative, representative of the applicant, which we have quite common.
I broke down and brought my own copy of the site plan on flash drive tonight, just in case. My name is John Davis. I'm principal landscape architect with the firm of John M. Davis, R.L.A. We are land planning and landscape architecture group. We were retained by the client to first investigate the site for them and then create a site plan. I believe you gentlemen have copies of the site plan in your paperwork. If you would like, I can ask the lady to put the flash drive in this thing, and we can look at it on the screen. Would that be easier for you?
Do y'all want to see the site plan or rely, rely on planning and zoning? Do y'all gonna see the site plan or rely, rely on planning and zoning? Alright, they've already seen it, so.
Okay. Well, as it was said, the property is twelve point eight acres plus or minus and there's an additional four acres on the rear next to, I believe it's Bushy Creek and that is in, actually, Gwinnett County. So we are actually doing a rezoning, only twelve point eight acres from the Highway twenty back about seventeen hundred feet. And then there's a four acre parcel back there. That area will not be part of our development plan. If you look, if you saw the plan, you can see we will have a central entrance point on Highway twenty. On either side, there will, right now, we're planning on two commercial lots that are slightly more than an acre each. That would be for use for highway business type operations that might want to come in there or office space, for instance. The actual parking of the cars and the building that they have will be behind those units, behind those lots out front. There is an original, the original plan, we want to put in a one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty car gravel parking lot, which we're going to line with geotextile fabric. That keeps it from pushing into the ground. The lot will have the area for the three, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty cars and it will also have a segment in the back of it where they can park their tractor trailer rigs and their storage containers. The material is brought in there from auctions. They're not cars that have to be worked upon. They don't have to do bodywork, they don't do mechanical work. They buy reasonably good cars and then they ship them overseas. We do have an area on the right-hand side of the property that is a potential expansion point for that. We looked at the area around it. This plan meets your comp plan, it meets your codes for what you have out in this area. It's already, it's B two now. They wish to take it to B three because that allows the automobile section without having to get a special use permit. We are actually leaving of that twelve point eight acres, there's about roughly four acres that is untouched. If you look at the plan, there's a section of arched area that is drawn on that plan and that will remain where it is. And it's a terrain issue. It's pretty steep. So we're not even developing the entire twelve point eight acres when you get down to it. We do not think this will be a problem for the area. This is consistent, as I said, with your comp plan. It's consistent with the stuff that happens around it. The properties across the street from it are A ones. One is a church and the other two lots, they're addressed to Bailey Circle. They're the people who own the land now that are selling it. We have touched base with Georgia Department of Transportation. I spoke with the gentleman there. We have about a five hundred and fifty foot frontage and we're entering at the dead center. And we have XL D cell lanes coming across the frontage of the property, which you'll see on the plan. We are also now, we have a traffic engineer involved with J.DOT who works with them and if they come back with a ruling that they need a left-hand turn lane, that's something we'll put in. This is a, I think it's a good product for this area. I think it's something that could be a good investment. We went through all of the Planning Commission's request for their terms. We don't have a single problem with any of their issues. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Alright, thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there anyone else for the applicant that would like to speak? Okay, anyone here in opposition of this rezon? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board their opinion.
Shawna, he touched on it, but Georgia Department of Transportation will do all the D cell.
That's correct, yes, sir.
It'll have to be approved by them.
Yes.
Everything's good. I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Banks to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shellnut. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, four point five.
Okay. This is approval with conditions of Z two-two zero-four zero-zero-zero-four, rezone eleven point five-six acres from A two and B two to B three for office warehouse and outside storage. The applicant is Danny Cagle. The owners are Graham and Glenda Smith and David Cooper. Property is located on Lowry Road, Hoam Hollow and on seventy-eight. This is in District One. As the applicant, they want to move their grading business and a partner wants to move his air conditioning business to the site. There was some opposition, they had concerns about the condition of the roads, the concerns about the buffers that would be required and the safety of children. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve with six conditions. A minimum eight-foot tall solid fence installed along the property frontage of Lowry Road. The fence shall be kept in good repair at all times. On the Lowry side, Lowry Road side of the fence, the applicant shall install a single row of large evergreen trees similar to Japanese Cryptomeria or Thuga, Green Giant, but excluding Leland cypress. The trees shall be placed a minimum of twenty-five feet on center and must be a minimum eight feet tall at the time of installation. All required landscaping and fencing shall be installed outside the right-of-way on Lowry Road. Frontage screening requirements described herein may be utilized to satisfy any outdoor screening requirements of the Walton County Comprehensive Land Development Ordinance as determined by the director. Those are the conditions.
That's my fault, alright. Alright, I'm going to open the public hearing as the applicant here on this application. Please, please come forward, we have to hear from the applicant first.
Sorry about that. Chad Johnson and with Arctic Circle Air. I'm gonna partner on this with Danny Cagle, he's got contour grading. Both of us currently have our businesses in Walton County. What we're wanting to do is build two businesses there. We're okay with all the conditions. The one concerning is the, the Leland cypress. It's a dirt road, I don't know what kind of tree we're gonna have to plant there. I assure you, we want to make sure that the, the homeowners that are in opposition are okay with what we're doing and we want to please them. We want to be neighborly, but we don't know what type of tree that we're gonna have to plant on that road.
I understand. I despise specifying specific varieties of plants to be planted. But some sort of green.
Some sort, yeah, yeah, we want to create the buffer that's pleasing to them. We understand that they don't want to.
Something you can't see through is, I think, what they're reaching for.
Correct, yeah, yes.
Okay? Any other, any other objections with the conditions that?
Yes, sir.
Set forth? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, is anyone else here in favor of this that would like to speak? Alright? Anyone here in opposition to this would like to speak? Please come forward. Please come forward.
My name is David Foyle. One of the homeowners, homeowners that's adjacent property to this. On, on the conditions that the Planning Commission set forth on items one, two and three, we don't have any, I mean, excuse me, on items one and two, we don't have a problem with that. But on number three, there were two trees named, one of them was Japanese, can't remember exactly what that one was.
Japanese Cryptomeria.
Okay, and then the other one was Thuga, Green Giant.
Mm-hmm.
As being the similar type of trees. And the, the Japanese tree, if you look up the reference on it, is a very narrow tree. And the recommendation of the spacing on that tree is only like three to four feet to actually give a border. So what we were thinking was we would, if, if you make a modification to drop that tree and as far as we're concerned, add the Leland cypress, that, that would be more along the lines of being able to give us a border because the whole property, that whole acreage out in front of us is gonna be completely cleared.
Well, what you're after is a continuous green.
Correct.
Shield.
Correct.
Ever what the distance is of ever what variety. I've always hated specifying specific varieties.
Correct.
Because in certain areas, certain shade conditions, certain trees work better than others.
I agree.
If you specify the eight-foot tall or whatever the height is minimum at planting time and the distance to sufficiently shield, make a green screen, I think should be more.
Well, the only, only other problem that we had with that was on, on the distance. In other words, they put down twenty-five feet.
Which can be too far for certain varieties.
Way too far.
Right.
So what we wanted to do was go ahead and put the recommendation in. If any one of the two trees that were named, if we added Leland cypress, there's a recommendation for it to eight to ten feet, make it nine feet. For the other one, the, the Green Giant, there's a recommendation on it was four to six, no, five to six feet, make it six feet and have those two choices there. So.
I understand your concern there.
So that's what, that's what that was. And the, the only other thing that we wanted to add was that I know it's not in the plan currently, but just as far as a future protection, we wanted to add that driveway or other access to the property from Lowry Road be prohibited. Whereas the plan.
Does the site plan show a driveway now?
Coming off of Hoam. Yes, it does.
Well, they'd have to go before planning to change the site plan, wouldn't they not? Shawna?
We can do it, we can limit it off the.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here in opposition like to come and speak? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Ray Pielos, I live at twenty-two forty Lowry Road. We're just right on the corner of Hoam Hollow and Lowry. If you, if you travel down seventy-eight and you make a right-hand turn onto Hoam Hollow Road is the Dollar General, brand new. This proposed plan of entrance into this complex, you'll turn into Dollar General. Fifty feet from that, you'll be turning into this complex. In fifty more feet, you're gonna be turned onto Lowry Road. That's a lot of traffic and a lot of congestion for that road. That road is highly traveled. And I think if you put the entrance from Hoam Hollow, it's gonna cause accidents and it should be congestion from, from seventy-eight in front of Dollar General, which is gonna back up traffic. And also the buffer, because I live right on the corner. I don't think, I think we just got proposals, what's gonna be built, we really don't know. The gentleman said it's gonna be heating and air and then it's gonna be, it's gonna be a grading site. But that's not for the, all of eleven acres, that's just for half of it. So what's gonna happen to the other half? We just don't know. He's proposing to, just to build a heating and air place, is that's gonna take eleven acres? With, with eleven acres of trees being taken down? And then we, we have no more privacy. We'll be able to see seventy-eight more road. So I don't, I don't know what the proposal is or what the plans are. It's never been discussed.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here in opposition like to come forward? About to close the meeting, make sure. Alright, I'm, is the applicant like to rebut or answer any of the concerns?
Alright, it sounds like the, the buffer is the, the main concern and the type of tree. What we're willing to compromise on is to create a buffer. What type of tree that is, I don't know. But I believe if we could do a cypress tree, we could take it down, on here, it's twenty-five, probably take it down to twenty. They grow wide, they, or whatever tree we have to use, but I think twenty feet would be plenty instead of going twenty-five. Can't put them every two feet or three feet. So I think compromising it every twenty feet would be good.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anyone else like to make a comment before I close the public hearing on this? Alright, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board what's their recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I try very hard to get these right before they come to the board. From time to time, you know, things, things don't fall into place until the last minute. So I don't know how to put this together without just going through the list of conditions. I'm in agreement with number one and two, as proposed by the Planning Commission. Number three, I'm willing to leave those two varieties in place with the recommended plant spacing as directed by the Planning Commission. I want to include Leland cypress at ten-foot on center spacing. I want to provide that option. And then the last is prohibit driveway or other access along the property frontage of Lowry Road.
And to begin all that, you're making motion to approve it with these conditions.
That, that is correct and Shawna has those edits.
A second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second with the conditions that are noted for the record. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Alright, four point six.
Hold on one second, it's gone.
Did you lose it?
I did. I may just have to, oh.
Let me read it for you.
No, I got it. I was just trying to bring the parcel up. Okay, alright. Okay, so this is approval with condition Z two-two zero-four zero-zero-zero-seven, rezone two acres from R one to B two to expand current use of mini warehouses on adjacent property and outside storage. The applicant stated they own a small business, a family business, mini warehouses and outside storage and they want to expand. They did ask for variances that were not, the, the Planning Commission did not address all the variances that they wanted. They wanted a variance to reduce the buffer along the southerly property line from fifty to twenty-five with the addition of a fence. And then they wanted, their current buildings are twenty-foot apart. When we recently changed our code for mini warehouses, we now require twenty-six. So they want to, wanted to ask if they could continue these buildings with a twenty-foot. So there was no opposition. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the reduction of the buffer with the addition of an eight-foot opaque fence, but they did not address the distance between the buildings.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna open public hearing on this and it looks like the applicant's eager and ready to get up and tell us what they want to do, so please step forward and tell us what's going on.
Okay, hey, I'm John Hemphill, I'm, I'm one of the three.
Hey, I'm John Hemphill, I'm, I'm one of the three partners. My address is 3382 Smallwoods Lane in Gainesville, Georgia. That's my sister, one of the other primary partners. As you mentioned, we have the, an existing self-storage facility there now, looking to expand to the additional two acres. We have asked for the reduction in the buffer from 50 feet down to 25, doing an opaque fence, eight-foot fence there, we were, we're fine with that. And we also want to be consistent on the distance between the buildings. We will have the, the center lane be as wide as it needs to be, I think like 26 feet in between the two. We're going to do, you know, the set that's there, and then, and then the other set. And so we'll have the wider 26-foot, you know.
Main lane.
Main lane, down through there for, for vehicles and so forth. I, I have also talked to some other self-storage owners who predominantly have been putting in buildings about 20 feet apart, and that seems to work well for them. So that's, that's what I'm.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any questions from the board? I have built mini warehouses, and, and 20 feet is sufficient for side lanes, but your main entrance does need to be wider.
Right.
So I understand fully what you're talking about.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Any other people in support of this would like to come forward and make a comment? Anyone here in opposition to this would like to make, come forward and make a comment? Wow, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing of this and ask the board for a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezone with the redu, reduction of the buffer to 25 feet with the fencing. And anything else we need to, that's it. End of motion.
Did you, did you add the distance between the buildings?
Pardon?
Did you add the distance between the buildings from, okay, good, all right. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't catch that.
She asking, did he add the distance along the 20-foot since the existing buildings there are 20-foot apart, but have the 26 for the main thoroughfare, so it matches what's already on the site.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Got it cleared up, I think. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, we need to have a public hearing again on capital improvements element, 2022 annual update and adoption resolution.
Yes, sir, this is just the report that you've already approved, the transmittal to the Regional Commission and DCA, which now it has been approved, and we need to adopt it.
It has been published on the website. It's, I need to open a public hearing on this to see if anyone makes, wants to make some comments on the capital improvements element annual update. I gotta give them a few seconds, they may be hesitant. All right, CNN, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve and adopt this resolution.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve and adopt the capital improvements resolution.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Now the Walton County Comprehensive Plan update.
Okay, so this is the same. The comprehensive plan has to be, we have to review that every five years and come up with, you know, the new guidelines and offer the county. That has been transmitted to the Regional Commission and DCA and has been approved, and this is for the adoption of the comp plan and the land use map.
And do I open up a public hearing? I should. All right, I'll open a public hearing for any further comments. This has been on the internet, it's been published, we've had meetings, any further comments on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan? If not, I'll close the public hearing on that and entertain a motion that we approve this plan.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Got a motion from Commissioner Warren.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Dixon. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. The administrative consent agenda was sent out. Are there any questions on any particular item? If not, entertain a motion that the administrative consent agenda be approved.
So moved.
Have a motion from Commissioner Bradford.
Second.
Second from two places, take your choice. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous. Okay, we have some bids and proposals, which, the first is a proposal on Walton County Public Safety Complex, McCarthy and Barnsley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ketya Kowski with CPS for the Program Managers on the Public Safety Complex project. And today we're here to, to recommend authorization of the component guaranteed maximum price for, for CGMP to McCarthy-Barnsley. This CGMP covers design assist services for three packages, precast structures, detention equipment and security electronics, and the third is the electrical scope. The scopes of work for each of these packages were competitively bid with consideration for qualifications as well as cost. And all three recommended subcontractors, that's Metro Mot for the precast, Poly Jail Building Company for the detention and security electronics, and West Georgia Electric for the electrical scope, were deemed qualified, and all three were also the low bidders. We recommend authorization of CGMP number one today in two parts. First, for authorization of those design assist services for those previously mentioned three scopes of work, in the amount of $381,469. And then we further recommend that CPS be given authority to release McCarthy-Barnsley in the amount of $1,8144 once the purchase of the property has been completed. And this would be for development of precast production drawings, as well as to order the electrical switchgear for the project, which has a significant lead time. The total value of the CGMP before you is $1,389,613, and we at CPS do authorize, or recommend authorization of CGMP number one.
Okay, thank you very much. This is ongoing, lining things up, gentlemen, to start this public safety complex and stay on schedule. And a lot of work's been done to date, and a lot more needs to be done, and this is within the budget. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this authorization, both parts.
Second.
I have a motion and a second now. Any questions? You know, questions, I'll call, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Two? Is that correct?
Yes.
I just heard one aye on the.
Aye, oppose.
All right, we have two opposing, Commissioner Dixon, Commissioner Bradford. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a proposal, is Mr. Hank Shirley here? Hiding in the corner.
Absolutely.
We're finally to the point to release the contract on the Sunbelt Builders.
Yeah, that's correct.
On the courtroom.
Yeah, you are aware that would, we've got this project going to increase the size and remodel the courtroom number two at the government building, give the court, court system a lot more capability to function in the event that there's a pandemic again, they'll have enough space to socially distance and still conduct business. Also, make the courtroom big enough to try more than one or two defendants at a time. As for the board's approval, it will require a budget amendment. It came back a little bit higher than we budgeted.
What else is new? How much more higher?
It's 111,350.
More than budgeted, but we'll take care of that with budget amendment after we do this, or we got to do that now, Milton?
Milton's going to have the budget amendment. This is just to accept the proposal.
Okay.
I'm the contractor.
All right. Entertain a motion to accept the proposal on the contractor.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bradford.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shelton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes. All right, and the bid on the Agricultural Extension Office Building?
Yes, sir. As for the board's approval on this, this project was bid out twice. Both times it came back over budget. I worked with the low bid contractor to value engineer the project a little bit closer to within our budget, but it's still going to require a budget amendment of 181,423.5 cents.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to go ahead and let this contract and get this started.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, resolutions. First resolution? Thank y'all.
Good, good evening.
Good evening.
First resolution gives the chairman, we do this every year, the authority to amend the final budget as part of the year-end closing. Keep going, or do you guys do it individually? I'm sorry. I guess I keep going. Do you vote on it one by one?
We need to vote on each one of them. 8.1, let them vote on authorizing the chairman to do the final adjustments on the closing out of the budget.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And let the record show, I abstain.
Okay, the, the second resolution is for the budget amendments, which I believe you have in front of you. Number one is a splash four to rebuild the fire station that burned, Station 7.
And while we're talking about that particular item, I'd like the public to know that we do have a temporary location backup and operational. We have a trailer in place for the firemen, we have a vehicle there sufficient to handle the area, and all the calling apparatus where we can respond again and take care of the public. So just wanted to let everybody know, we did it all in less than a month, so.
And we, we are going to get insurance proceeds down the line, I guess. So that's the first one. The second one relates to the courtroom number two that Hank just spoke about, the renovation of courtroom two. And then the last one is for the Extension Service Project, also that Mr. Shirley spoke of.
The, three of those add up, well, of course, the fire station is up to 3 million. The other two is 280,000, or something like that.
The last one's 181, 181,000, and then the courtroom is 111,000.
Okay. 192,000.
Yes.
All right, that's the recommendation to adopt the 22 budget for those amendments, so these projects can proceed forward.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bradford.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Shelton. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Got those passed. And now, we have the fiscal year '23 budget proposal. And I have some items, if we can put them on the screen, and I'd like to make some comments, Milton, before you do this time. We've, we worked on this budget, the '23 budget, which is 6 million and a few thousand more on the general budget than the previous year's budget. And if you go down to the, go down a couple pages first, not that one, not that, that shows your millage rate for Walton County the last 10 years, the bottom line. We've gone from a 12.175 in 2011 to a 10.413. The last two years were reduction in millage rate. And we had three years the same millage rate, and it's there for everyone to see, it can be looked up online. Go to the next item, please. All right, this new budget includes what this board passed, go below the first straight black line, the wage increase that we passed last year in two different phases amounted When you do the wage increase, the third item is our defined benefits that made them increase 719,000. And then out of the blue, we got an increase in our health insurance of 2,377,000. All three of those are unavoidable, we have to do. The next line item, I've been trying to build up our fireman to keep from having one fireman in a fire station at night. We almost had a disaster at Good Hope by one fireman being there. We added eight last year, and we've been requested to add eight this year, along with a fire marshal and a fire technician. And that's 800,000. And then, the only other projection that we had to increase is our fuel cost, and this was based three months ago, when we were figuring 375 would be the max of fuel, where I filled up today at 439, and diesel's higher than that. If we leave the millage rate the same, then we, at the top, will increase on property taxes 2,176,000. And that looks extremely low, so I started investigating, and I thought I was real savvy on our property taxes and appeals. But we have a home state exemption in Walton County that, once you file for your home state exemption, your value is frozen for county tax purposes, not school tax purposes, not fire tax purposes, not city tax purposes, but for Walton County, this operation right here, that value is frozen at that time. If that millage rate never changes, you never get a tax increase or decrease, period. Well, how many parcels does this include? Over 19,400 parcels in Walton County. That is 19,400 Walton County taxpayers that are not looking at a county tax increase by us leaving the millage rate the same. If it was not for the lost local option sales tax increase in 3.46 million, we couldn't even do this, we would have to raise the millage rate, because this board voted for those pay raises unanimously, and carried through with that. There were other expenses that we couldn't put in the general fund that we took care of, if you'll move to the next page. We had equipment requests from roads and bridges and all the other different apartments that we had to move to splash four. That's how much important our splash funds are. We were able to cover new paving equipment and new items in the tune of 2,640,000 from impact fees in splash four. And then we had multiple vehicles, the sheriff's department, we've been approving five vehicles, he needed 10, other different departments, and we were able to take care of 2.9 million through splash. Inflation has hit, and it is getting worse. And for us to be able to maintain this mill rate. And for us to be able to maintain this mill rate without increasing it, we don't have the options the schools do and the cities do, because we're frozen at a value that could be fifteen years ago that we're taxing on, where they are taxing on the full new reassessed value, and they can roll back easier than we can. And I wanted to explain that. While we're talking about the budget, and Mr. Bradford, I'd like to congratulate you on a well-run election, but there was one statement that you made, and you went to the Tribune and made during your campaign that I take issue with. And that statement was, and it was printed, "If we found all this money in dormant accounts, why didn't we give it back to the taxpayers?" When you voted that very month for these pay raises and spent that money we found. And I take full issue with that. Number one, trying to crow cloud on if the money was ever there to begin with, and number two, you voted to spend it. I knew you were voting to spend it, and I take issue with that.
I appreciate your issues, and I appreciate you taking issue to it, and I appreciate your opinion on it. I'm not sure that the public forum is where you want to go with that, but if you do, that's fine. I have always voted for our employees to have pay raises, never voted against it, not even once. I've actually made motions to adopt it at a hundred and three percent at times. And I did have some questions when it came to you finding all this money, because I did ask, did you find it in a black satchel in somebody's closet, or was it in a brown satchel? You know, at somebody's house.
There you go.
But it was actually in an account, a government account, so it wasn't a big find, it was always there, and it was.
You've been here eight years, and you hadn't seen the damn thing, and it was right there in front of your eyes in the audit. Now, don't tell me. And it said unassigned, and you, and your smart talk about it not even being there, I take issue with. And you went to the Tribune like some little kid, and if that money was fine, now you just said a black satchel and a blue satchel. You want them in ways with me?
No, I said.
Start acting like a damn man. All right, we'll get back to business. We have this.
Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I did not vote in favor of the salary increases.
Okay. Well, that's fine, you didn't vote for the salary increases. But I take issue with that, and I made my comment, but.
And very professional with that, absolutely.
You got a big ovation. All right, the budget is here. Any questions on the budget? Well, entertain a motion to approve our twenty-twenty-three budget, based on leaving the millage rate the same.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Lee Bradford opposes his own pay raise. All right, that passes.
We've got like a huge general fund sitting there right now that you said is increasing, increasing, increased. We're increasing the budget at a time that, I don't, I guess I don't a hundred percent understand when we say, hey, that somebody's, you know, property tax value has been frozen. Because when I went out and met with people and different people, like, there were folks that were like eighty years old, and at eighty years old, there's one up thirteen hundred dollars.
They're looking at their school tax, there's no way the county tax went up.
They don't, they're.
Look into it, Lee.
Sixty-five.
You may not understand it, but look into it. Thank you. All right, we have another thing for discussion that we need to cover. And it's library. The, that was added to the agenda, the O'Kelly Memorial Library has asked us to approve two actions, a vote to agree to sign the application to the state aid, so they can seek funds of two to three million, and commitment to contribute to local funding on this project. We've always committed something to the local funding, we can meet at a later time and decide the amount that we contribute, but we need to move forward and approve this request, so they can start soliciting the state and try to get their two to three million grant for a new library in Loganville.
I'd like to make that motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Warren.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banks. Any further discussion?
Question. So what exactly are we doing with this motion?
This motion is allowing the trustees to seek funding from the state legislature for up to two to three million dollar grant. If they don't get the grant, then we don't go along with helping them build a new library. Their library is getting traffic blocked, it's right at the corner of Highway seventy-eight and, is it Highway twenty?
Twenty.
And it's hard to get in and out, it's not big enough for the population, and they are looking to enlarge, build a new library on this, and they don't even have a site yet. But this is the process, they'll get the grant, and then they'll choose site and request the county and the city of Loganville to help in their funding.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that anybody who wants to go look at this library that's probably forty to forty-five years old, stucko, in terrible shape, water comes in, a lot of places when it rains, very well-used library. The city of Loganville is, is working with them to help, and I would hope this board could help all they could to try to get this facility rebuilt.
Well, according to this letter, they'll be requesting up to one million, but generally, we, we have contributed on other projects anywhere from five hundred, six hundred thousand, something like that, but this being a larger one, it'll be up to the board once they get their financing in a row. I'm gonna call the vote on this. All those in favor of allowing them to proceed forward and us doing some sort of commitment, not saying how much, but we will commit something to it, is, is the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Now, if we go back to the water analysis, I need to make all y'all aware of this, and John will have some comments to make on this. This is the month of May, Walton County water usage, and for all you citizens that live here, knowing the month of May, the beginning of May was very dry. And as May progressed on, you'll see there, I think it was May the tenth, was the first day we maxed out at Cornish Creek Reservoir on our allotment of water that we get. And then we rocked along there six days, and on May seventeenth through May twenty-second, we were in dire shapes of water. We were maxing out at Cornish Creek, we were buying all we could get from Monroe and bleeding Oak County. Now, this is a red flag, and that's why we have been looking and trying to work on Hard Labor Creek Reservoir. I wanted to bring this forward because some opponents to Rivian have brought up Hard Labor Creek and saying, oh, they'll build a water plant there for Rivian. Cornish Creek is taking care of Rivian in Newton County, this is for Walton County, and Walton County only if we move forward looking at this project. And I want to make the public aware, as well as these commissioners here that we have, can get in a dire situation real fast. As long as it rains, you see when the rain came on the, what is it, twenty-fourth, water usage dropped immediately. And John, would you like to make the statement? And Morris is here, if you need to ask him.
Just to give you some numbers, there were forty-five new water meters set last month. We're currently standing at sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven active water customers in the county. In addition, you know, we're moving forward with your approved project of GPS location on all the assets and the GIS mapping that's underway. And again, anything moving forward with Hard Labor would be user fee-based, not general fund-based, so it would not hit the tax, tax digest, it would just be water and user fee from the enterprise fund. But I do believe that with the numbers, usage, and our maximum allotments that we currently have, it is a dire need to move forward with exploring that resource that was already invested in.
Okay. Morris, you have anything to comment?
One thing to point out, I guess I know it's a period, but I don't have that much to comment, but those usage numbers are without a million plus of gallons a day, including last summer with Loganville. That's from.
That. That is a big point. When we first started looking at this in May of last year, we peaked out, first of May, we had a little dry spell last year, but we were selling Loganville one million gallons a day. City of Monroe completed their pipeline to Loganville, and Loganville started using City of Monroe water rather than buying water through us under a contract that they signed with City of Monroe. I thought that would have given us a couple years to get our ducks in order. And lo and behold, one year later, in May, we're using that million that Loganville gave up, plus what we're doing, so.
And what we're currently doing right now is just exploring options and funding sources to bring that back before the board, so that you have different options at your disposal.
Okay. That was just to let everyone know, and Hard Labor Creek, unlike popular knowledge, was not built with taxpayer funds, it was built by Walton County Water and Sewer and Oak County County Water and Sewer. It is an enterprise fund, they were a half million or so dollars, tax dollars, that did go in in the very beginning, and Walton County does guarantee their bonds, but they're a standalone company, and they're paying for Hard Labor Creek Reservoir, so it's always been the conception out there that the taxpayers have a ninety million dollar fishing lake, but the users within the water department do. Are there any announcements? We will have to go into executive sessions, there's some real estate matters that we need to discuss, and most likely come out and make an announcement about.
I've got just a few for you. New ambulance and EMS is currently on the road, and we're expecting the second one to be delivered. Fire, Walton County Fire Rescue Class of twenty twenty, twenty-two, has completed all their training classes. They've all passed Fire One, Fire Two, Hazmat, as well as EMT certifications, they began training in November, and now, as of Monday, May twenty-third, they begin shift assignments. As mentioned earlier, Station Number Seven, the temporary station, is now operational, but we are currently working on plans to rebuild. In public works, right-of-way mowing, round number one has been completed and starting round two, and the paving of Grattis Road is underway. I think tonight's agenda shows you the volume of, just a fraction of the volume of what planning and facilities has been handling in their daily operations. And finance, just wanted to thank you for an excellent job on finishing up the twenty-three budget. You and your staff have done an excellent job. All staff across the county are doing an excellent job, and I'll just end with, with all the positive activity that's going on, it's a great time to be in Walton County.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Send move.
Motion, we go to executive session, discuss.
Discuss real estate. Got a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
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 This will be young move fast. Old truck to new truck, they never do that. Well, if we get a brand. Because every year they come up with something different probably on boxes. But I would imagine it takes a while.
Two or three days.
Which was good.
Well, nowhere near.
So they try to get what was made for young. Or the who bought for young. Not the wheels, just his chassis. But the station, y'all got the movement since over ten. The in social. But you could use a little bit.
Six.
That's what I'm saying, they're just. Most folks that want to go to the hospital should get. Or you still get the one, just check. Or the fat. The fat, yep. Check blood pressure. I laughed at the time, we didn't have. We didn't have, I think, nine hundred and six. I mean, really, double bay on social travel and. In Jersey. Kid. Perseid. Once you retire. You can't be mad.
You don't take that, you can't.
Perseid, we can take. Now, I draw, I draw a piece of this. Still, it's a job. What do you mean? Yalls. When Russ was there, I guess we did. Good thinking about the road in the morning.
Yeah. I've been working for a long time, getting hours, leadership, and they got that up. I'm in a leadership position, a year long, a week at a time. Last one, we met. August, we moved our time out for this work. She's the director of this. He said you can actually break. You don't play about. Yeah, you know. Something got to get that changed. Every time again, we. They want the work, they're just working fashion. They're complaining.
Josh still waiting? I haven't seen him yet. You know what?
Nationally, they're about to push in on the trucks. Yesterday until I got somebody in.
You could, you could just make special one out there some days. No, this, I mean. Then we had to have a different, no, we had to do different things. It's not, it's not. That's personal, right? Third, I was doing, that's how I'd say it during the commission. I saw, I didn't know it for sure if that was him or not.
Yes.
The public hall. I'll do that.
Casey, Casey. Yeah. Like he is amazing. Like it. But he's not... He knows, they don't know. He just... Hmm?
She said... Did you have the... Did you go to the... This is...
Okay, I think the way we do this is a motion to come out of executive session and go back into regular session.
So moved.
Go back in the regular session.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, there's two items that we get to come out and announce according to the land. Uh, either acquisitions or controlling. The first is that we've agreed to put forth renting part of the property at Walnut Grove since we can't do the whole park at one time, renting it out for agricultural purposes to, as farmland, to either let them head or grow corn or whatever on for the next year and a half until we get our plans together. Uh, and we'd advertise that to the public for lease. And it'll be for... Recommendation is for the rest of this year and then next crop year. And I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And the next item is we're able to announce we've been in negotiations on the purchase of... What's the address? I'll just say it's the Carter Watkins Building here across from Sanovis. And gonna make a recommendation that we proceed with the purchase of the building. And price, total price will be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Five hundred for the building and land and fifty thousand for all the furnishings. And, uh, I take pride in making that motion.
If you'll add to your motion, Mr. Chairman, that they authorize you to sign all documents.
And allow me to sign all documents to close the property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
All right, we have one opposition. All right, is there any other business before? No other business, we can go eat some late dinner. All right, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.